Good evening. I'd like to call the December 10th, 2013 Longmont City Council meeting to order. This is a regular session. Could we please start with a roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Councilmembers Bagley, Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Levison.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Santos.
Here.
Mayor Coombs, we have a quorum.
All right, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call, public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place that their names on that list will have an opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening, or on the final call, public invited to be heard at the end of the meeting on any item. Are there any agenda revisions or submissions of documents?
Mayor Coombs, there are none.
All right. Is there a report from the city manager?
Yes, Mayor and Council, there is, but Sean will introduce it.
All right. And also one report that Mayor Prokem Bagley is not here.
Yes, indeed, Mayor. How are you?
Good.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Sean Lewis, Assistant City Manager. I just wanted to introduce you to our Target Industry Analysis Consultants. They have been in town for the last two days and will be meeting with the Steering Committee tomorrow morning at 7:30 for those of you who signed up for that, and then heading out. But they have had a very productive few days here and are going to talk to you a little bit about their time. I do want to say that it's very rare to have as much council participation in these processes. This is my second one that I've done, but definitely far more council participation already. And so I just want to thank all of you. I think almost all of you have been in either one of the focus groups or gotten to go to the LAUC Board meeting where they also presented. They are Avalanche Consulting, and there are two representatives of the firm that are here with us. Tony DeLeese is kind of the stats guy, I think, for the firm. They'll tell you more about him. And then Amy Holloway. And I'll also mention that Amy has a local connection. Her sister lives here and was impacted severely by the flood. Her family's farm was badly damaged. They're still not actually back in it, just east of town. But at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Amy to tell you a little bit about the process and how things are going.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Mayor Coombs. It's really wonderful to be here. Thank you, members of the council. I just want to spend a few minutes. I first want to thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to work with Longmont. I know, as Sean said, I have family ties here, and so this project is especially important to me, and I want to do the best job we can for you. Avalanche Consulting is a national economic development strategic planning firm. We do work all over the country with communities who want to improve their economies. We start off with every project with a competitive assessment of the economy and talking with as many people from the community as we can to get a good picture of what's happening here locally and hear the perspective and vision of local leaders and residents. That's part of what we've been doing here this week. We spent all day yesterday and all day today conducting focus groups with residents and interviews with leaders. We've talked to, I think, within this trip, probably around 50 people from the community. Many of you, if not most of you, have been involved with our meetings. The next time we come out, it's going to be the third week in January, which I hope to see you again at that time, where we'll be presenting some of our preliminary findings from the competitive assessment. We'll be presenting our recommendations in terms of target audiences and target industries for your future economic development efforts, and then doing some workshopping with you and members of the community on strategies and recommendations that'll be in the final strategy. And we will be presenting you with a final recommendation, final strategy by the end of March. We encourage anyone from the community who wants to share their opinion on economic development and the vision for the community with us. I think Sean has our contact information, and we're always available by email if there's anyone who wants to share ideas with us.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions from anybody?
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Sean.
No more. Okay, so let's. There's nobody that's signed up for first, for public invited to be heard, so I guess we'll get right to the ordinances on the second reading.
Yes, Mayor, your first item is ordinance 2013-70, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities for the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2013. And Teresa Malloy, do you have a presentation? She has a brief presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Teresa Malloy, Budget Manager. And I will briefly talk about the next two items, the budget appropriation, the CIP, and then I also want to cover, while I'm up here right now, the urban renewal authority item that is on general business for you. So really briefly, I just wanted to point out that this appropriation and the CIP are the final ones that you'll see for 2013. The appropriation tonight of about $2.75 million brings our total budget for 2013 to over $298.7 million. So that is our final budget for the year. Just a reminder that it does include some flood items, so it is certainly a much larger budget than we have had in prior years. The items that are included in the appropriation tonight, most of which is covered by additional revenues, so things such as grants and donations, those types of things. On the CIP amendment, I just wanted to point out that this is the final CIP amendment that you will see that will come to you in terms of an ordinance. As we discussed in November, that process will now change to more of an administrative type process, and that will begin next year. And then finally, the urban renewal item that is on general business, just to point out to you that that is, that budget is for legal and financial services for Cent peaks Mall, and it brings our Longmont Urban Renewal Authority budget to $228,000 for the year of 2013. So that's all I had for you this evening. Certainly be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Don't see any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 2013-70. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item at this time? I guess seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move ordinance 2013-70.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. Okay, passes seven to zero. She must have a sticky button. Councilmember Levison.
I need to announce the next item. Oh, fine. Mayor Coombs, your next item is ordinance 2013-71, bill for an ordinance amending the 2013-2017 capital improvement program. There is no staff presentation because Teresa just made it.
Councilmember Levison.
Thank you. I was ready to jump the button here. Mayor, I'd like to move ordinance 2013-71 for approval.
Well, we officially have to have the public hearing on it.
Sorry.
I open the public hearing on ordinance 2013-71. Is there any pretty from the audience who would like to speak with this, on this item at this time? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Levison.
Now I'm getting very approving looks, so let's move it. I'd like to move ordinance 2013-71, Mayor.
All right. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. And that passes seven to zero.
Mayor, your next item is, there are two ordinances. I'll read them both before you have the public hearings. Ordinance 2013-72, a bill for an ordinance repealing ordinance 2013-57, and adopting the budget for the city of Longmont for the year 2014. The second ordinance is ordinance 2013-73, a bill for an ordinance repealing ordinance 2013-58, and making appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2014. And Teresa is here to answer questions on this.
Okay. See any questions from council? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 2013-72. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on the public hearing item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2013-72. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'd like to move ordinance 2013-72.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Okay, I'll now open the public hearing on ordinance 2013-73. Is there any in the audience that'd like to speak on ordinance 2013-73? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on 2013-73. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd move ordinance 2013-73.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is ordinance 2013-74, which is a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 14.36 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Park Fund and Land for Municipal Uses. And Kim Sugar is here to make a brief presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kim Sugar, Natural Resources Manager. I just real quickly wanted to make a couple points for this item to remind everybody, since it's been a little while since we talked about the park improvement fee. Just as a reminder, the projects that went into the development of this fee are from a, are looking at a 10-year horizon of all the park projects, and then a portion of the trail projects, approximately $8.3 million. And just as a reminder, the fund generated by this park improvement fee does not cover the entire cost for the projects over the 10-year period. There remains approximately $6.5 million of unfunded projects. So just as a reminder, the fee is going to be implemented over a three-year period. So we'll start in 2014, and this is to reduce the increases per year. And then once 2017 hits, we will be then increasing the fee according to the construction index, which is similar to what we do with other fees. So with that, if there were any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Kim, do you have the fees for other communities in our area?
I do. And this was the slide that we did present in September. So, and as we had mentioned previously, this has not been updated for 2013. We are still gathering information from other communities because we're doing it as a larger fee update. So we have the fees for Longmont, and I did add, that we did a first year, 2014, for our park improvement fee. And in addition, we had previously presented the regional comparison of all impact fees charged to communities.
So I can go back.
Yeah, and I do have printouts. That may be easier to look at here. So we are number one. Yes, and just as a reminder, while it does show the city is number one, you know, we try to make it apples to apples as best we can, but several communities, which we didn't reflect up here, not only have a park fee, but have a greenway fee, which our greenway and trail fee is part of our park fee. So the planning division is currently looking at updating these fees, and we're trying to find a better way to show comparison for, not only for parks and greenways, which we're talking about today, but also other fees because right now it is really hard to do a comparison amongst all communities just because there's different things that go into all the fees.
Councilmember Bagley. Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just could you help us remember, could you refresh our memories in order? What does the regional, what does the regional development fee consist of versus the regional park fee comparison? So I mean, I know that the regional park fee is one, but these are all the other things other cities charge for when you want to develop. So I'm just curious, can you refresh and tell us?
So the regional park fee just relates to, we try to identify the impact fees related to parks, and many of them are parks and greenways. So that's all that's in one. And then, and the other regional development fee, it's all other charges, well, all costs that are charged to developers, all impact fees, whether it's transportation, water, wastewater, and actually, Dale might, storm, storm drainage, building permits. And this does also include the park and greenway fees as well.
So we charge more than others for parks, but we charge less total to develop?
Correct.
And that would make sense, I guess, because we have a lot of trails and greenways and parks, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Levison.
Can you tell us why we've gone with a flat fee on these single-family tax versus in multi-family versus just a square foot fee? I mean, I think it was calculated on $2.29 based on an average of past five years. And not knowing what we're going to build in the next five years, why that, why that methodology was chosen?
Yes, Mayor and Council. When we evaluated initially, we actually did look at whether we should charge individually for homes, but then it was decided that it would be easier to have just two fees, a single-family versus a multi-family, as far as in planning developers want to look ahead. So they wanted a little bit more assurance of which one it is. But then at some point, there, even though the pickup size is, you're still going to have a certain number of people living in, in a dwelling. So even if you had a house of 1,000 square foot, you're still likely to have similar number of people, even in a larger home. In some cases, you'll have more children, but it's, there's still some logic that there's certain breakpoints. And so we were trying to keep it simple. At one point, we did have it broken out. We had some meetings with developers, and they thought it was getting too complicated. So we did look at trying to simplify this as much as possible.
So someone building a 3,500-square-foot house saves about $1,000 by doing it this way, right?
Well, for this actually here, this was just an example. We tried to do apples to apples. It's not necessarily according to a 2,400-square-foot home.
Well, I think it was 1,900 was used in the calculation.
Yes, it was used in the calculation. Yes.
And like I said, And like I said, so it's potentially leaving some money on the table there. If you build, I mean, if homes tend to grow bigger now from now moving forward, then we're going to be missing out on revenue.
So I think one of the things, we are planning on tracking the data really closely, and then at some point, when we do do our updates, we can evaluate that to see it's changed. The 1,900 was an average, so you're obviously going to have homes smaller and larger, and depending on where in the city, we're, we're seeing both trends. So, so at this point, that was the best data we have, and so we'll definitely track it. And that was one of the things, you see as recommendations in, in the report that was back behind it, was to take the time to really track the data so that we have a better understanding of what we have in the community.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor. So can you remind us what the recommendation from the, from the Parks and Recreation Commission was on this, the suggestions when you took it to them?
So the first recommendation was actually for option 1B versus 2B, which was based on, wasn't based on square footage. So, and then when we went back after we had further conversations, they did make a motion supporting 2B as well.
So how would, is there going to be a yearly update to council on where we are? I'm just reflecting a little bit on what Councilmember Moore said. I mean, what happens if we get, we don't have a, it just seems, the way we have the numbers, it would seem that we are unleveling the marketplace when we're discount, when we're not charging the same amount of fees for essentially, if the supposition is that single-family detached is going to be the same amount of usage as residential multi-family, yet there's a big difference in fees. Isn't that messing with the marketplace as far as, you know, inequity?
I don't have the data to be able to say one way or the other.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, don't worry, comment, anybody else want to say anything before I jump in? No? I guess the, just my recollection, and council members, correct me if I'm wrong, but a while ago, we had, actually two years ago, when Councilmember Finley and myself first joined council, that's when I remember this really coming to the forefront. And essentially, the idea was that if you've got a 3,500 square foot house, you would be paying the same fee for someone who's building an apartment, not apartment building, but if you have an apartment building, you're having to pay the same fee. So you could go a 35,000 square foot home, I know that's big, but you could build a 35,000 square foot home and pay $5,000, or I think it's 7,500 or whatever. And then, 5,100? And then, and then you could build a 35,000 square foot, you know, multi-family little apartment building, and it's 5,100 times every single apartment. And at the time, you know, and we still continue to have problems with finding places for people to afford affordable housing, so we needed more apartments. And so, in order to be more fair for the developers, not put everything onto their backs as well, and to, and kind of influence and prod them into developing projects that our community needs, we said, "Staff, go back and try to come up with a better way that's more fair." And they came back and they said, "Yeah, we should probably base it on square footage, and if you're going to build a single-family home, you probably should be paying a little bit more because the people who are building apartments, they're building the same square footage, but they're paying more in fees." And so ultimately, after debate, et cetera, now granted, that doesn't mean that you guys have to go along with anything because you guys are perfectly welcome to have your own thoughts, et cetera. But after, that's kind of the genesis of the idea, was to not necessarily leave revenue on the table, but it was to kind of level the playing field, make them pay a little bit more for the single-family residential, and lower it for people who wanted to put in much-needed apartments. And so that's, that's kind of the best, at least at the time, what we thought was the best option for making sure that it was fair and we get our apartment buildings.
And we'd also looked at, you know, trying to assess how many people are living in each type of units, and that was going to just be too complicated because you can't control it, you can't measure it. And that kind of an average square footage was, was it just the simplest way to quickly get to something where we could project future revenues and that the developers understood, and it was more fair to someone that's, you know, building an 800 square foot apartment versus a 35,000 square foot house? Anyway, I don't see other questions. So I'll open this up for public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that'd like to speak on this agenda item at this time? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor, I would move ordinance 2013-74.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is ordinance 2013-75, a bill for an ordinance authorizing a lease agreement between the City of Longmont as LSEES and the Archdiocese of Denver as LSEOR for use of the St. John's Baptist Church parking lot for Longmont City employee parking. Barbara McRae will make a short presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Members of Council. My name's Barbara McRae, I'm the Business Services Manager for Public Works. So this item is something that we've done for several years. The city has leased parking spaces at the church, probably for 10 to 15 years. And in the past, those leases have typically been for three-year terms. Last year, we did the lease for one year because we wanted to allow staff time to go back and reevaluate parking needs for the Civic Center campus, which includes the library, the Development Services Center, and the Civic Center. And staff did that, looking at different options for, for employee parking. Right now, that lease, this current lease expires at the end of December of this month. So when we did that analysis, that was done by our Traffic Engineering Administrator, Bob Ball, and his staff. And essentially, they looked at the number of employees that worked in all of those buildings, and what were the spaces that were utilized. And it was very clear to staff at that point that we continue to have a very heavy need for employee parking, and that the 46 spaces that are utilized at St. John's needs to either be replicated somewhere else or if they're. And so we went forward, asking to renegotiate that lease with the Archdiocese of Denver, and they came back with the proposed agreement in front of you tonight that has a changing amount each year. In 2014, they're proposing that amount to be $325 per space per year. In 2015, it'd be $330, and 2016, it'd be $335. And council may remember last month that the DDA came back with a change in their rates that they are going to be charging for their parking lots. And for the 300 to 600 blocks along Main Street, they landed on $336 per space per year. In the 200 block of Main Street, they were, they were at, the DDA was going to be at $240 a space per year. And then for the new underground parking that's being done at Long Peak and Main, that was going to be $432 per space per year. But it's, it's covered, so it's worth more. So before you deny us this ordinance, that you, for your approval, denial, or amendment, and based upon that need, staff would recommend that we go ahead and approve a three-year lease with the St. John's. And I'm here to answer any questions about any more details on what we went through.
Councilmember Levinson.
Yes, Barb, I've had some ongoing discussions with the city manager about this situation, too. When Bob Ball did an assessment of parking around, did he look at available street parking, even just, I don't know, 100 feet away on the south side of Third Avenue, where there's no two-hour limit?
And he looked at the whole area. And there is heavy utilization along Third Avenue, as well as he looked over off of the lot at Second and Main. There are about, there are 44 spaces there and two handicap, and right now, the utilization in that parking lot's about half. I'm not sure the DDA would be willing to, to allow all of those leases to go towards the city because they'd want to utilize it for the businesses there. We also then did look at the parking lot on the east side of the Safety and Justice Center, and that parking lot is very heavily utilized. And actually, public safety staff approached Bob at one point, asking if they could change the striping on Emery Street to angled parking because they felt that they had overflow parking over into St. John's. And he looked at the width of the road and said it couldn't be accommodated there. So it's, it's either there, or it's, it's in the, all over in the neighborhoods there.
Actually, I did a little bit of my own kind of point-in-time survey. And yesterday, which is supposed to be the day that the arraignments happen on Mondays, we heard from the judge, which would be heavy utilization. At 3:00 in the afternoon, there were 30 spaces available on the east side of that Public Justice Building parking lot, as well as, with the exception of one, one car, no other cars parked between Third Avenue and Second Avenue on the west side of Emery Street, as well as one car only parked between Emery and Collier Street on the south side of Third Avenue. This afternoon, you know, there were two cars parked. And what I did notice, though, is that employees and visitors are utilizing the north side of Third Avenue that's directly adjacent to the building, and using that as free parking as well. So, I mean, my suggestion is, you know, we try to look a little harder because we have so many needs in this city for basically responding to flood and other needs that I thought that we were going to try a little bit harder on this issue due to the discussion last year. So I'm not going to be voting in favor of this.
Councilmember Finley. Thank you, Mayor Coombs. If I remember correctly, they came back with a, originally, they wanted a much higher number. And our instruction was, "Go back and tell them that we will pay market rate." And now, they're basically agreeing to a contract that is the same price that is less than we're actually charging people. And so, and I think that Third Avenue's busy, 46 spaces, you know, it'd be tough to guarantee that we're gonna, we're gonna be able to get parking for our employees. And the irony is, I think that they need to get to work so they can resolve the flood issue and take care of the business of the city. So I certainly respect Councilmember Levinson, but I'm going to be voting in favor.
Councilmember Santos. Thank you, Mayor Coombs, well, Councilmember Bagley's recollection is correct. We did ask, they did want a higher rate. We did ask them to go back and ask, and tell them, "We would like market rate." I'm trying to figure out exactly how, over a 10-year span and the time that we've been on council, with Councilmember Levinson and I, all of a sudden, in the last several years, this has become an issue. But I'm trying to find the genesis of how this has now become in the last two to three years. This is now an issue. Our employees need a place to park instead of doing the little two-hour to three-hour shuffle. So yes, as Councilmember Bagley mentioned, so they can actually do the work to help the residents, and help the residents of the City of Longmont go about their business with the city and help them with the flood. If we had... The amount of time that we've spent on this in the last two years, three years, is mind-numbing. Over, where are we, how are we going to spend here? $14,000, almost $15,000. And then we're going to, another $15,000 in '15, and then another $15,000 in '16, so our employees can do work. But it's okay to toss out money other places, Councilmember Levinson. I'm, I'm, you boggle the minds sometimes. So can, can we get through this and keep going?
I just kind of say that, you know, people, I mean, obviously, there's parking spots in residential, and people could park there and walk a couple of blocks. But then people that live in those homes, they don't want, yeah, they get upset. And then businesses want places for their employees, so I see that and I get that. You know, I like walking myself, but I can see, I think this is pretty good value. You know, I think last year, I recall that originally, they wanted $450 a parking spot, something like that, and 500, okay, yeah, it was quite a debt, and we did get that price down largely because of Sarah's push for it. And so for that, I, and Alex, yeah, Sarah and Alex. So anyway, I'm going to be supporting it. You know, it's, it'd be nice to save $15,000, but I think it's probably, we can figure out better ways to, other areas to save $15,000. I think this is kind of important to our employees, and it's important to the residents around here not to clog up their streets in front of their houses with city employees.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. While I work in downtown Denver, and you would pay 300 a month if you were lucky, I think our staff is a professional staff and should be treated like a professional person, and they should be given a place to park close to where they work. So I will be voting for this as well.
Councilmember Levinson.
I'd like to give Councilmember Christian Senator Moore a chance to jump in. If you want to jump in before I make a comment a second time. So the other piece of research that I did is around the new project that Boulder County is doing the expansion at Coffin Street. And they anticipate, when fully built out, that they will have a total of 400 employees at that building every day, and 500 clients. And the additional parking spaces they're going to build is about 120, some of which will be devoted to pool cars and other spaces for motorcycles or electric bikes, that sort of thing. So I just wanted to point out that, you know, that's, it just seems that the goal there is not to provide parking for every single employee either. And I don't think that anybody would decide that it was a mark of not having a professional staff not to provide a parking space for every employee at no cost. My personal experience has been that, you know, this is something that no one ever had an expectation of working for government, having paid parking. So, but I understand that, you know, my, my professional background in working for government may be not as much a storytelling piece in this, this discussion right now. But I just wanted to point out that for Boulder County, they are going to have a massive expansion, and their expectation is that they are going to not use any additional land and be very frugal with their parking spaces.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, if you want to, we can go tit-for-tat for everything. So, you know, 9B is coming up, and that's the EcoPass. We can save $37,000 out of the street fund and just kill that for every employee. We offer EcoPasses for, you know, employees of the city. But is that a good cost of taxpayer dollars as well? I think, happen to think so. One, because it boosts ridership on buses, that helps, you know, helps us. It gives the employees that need bus services to the city. It's another example of getting our employees here and also helping them do their jobs here. So if we want to save $15,000, or we can, you know, we can use $15,000, we can find ways and, we can find things within the budget to strip if we really want to, in all different forms and manners. So to go tit-for-tat for, it's ridiculous.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 2013-75. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to weigh in on public hearing on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2013-75. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor, I would move ordinance 2013-75.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, let's vote. Councilmember Bagley.
I just have a quick question. What, what do other cities do with parking? I mean, those same Greeley, Fort Collins, Loveland, Arvada, Westminster, do they give free parking to their employees? free parking to their employees? I mean, I'd just be, maybe, maybe, I mean, I'm just curious. And so is it a perk that everybody expects on city staff? Is it something that we've always done? Is it something that if we take away, they'd be like, what the hell, City Council took away our money and our parking? You know, is it, I'm just curious. What, is this something that, like, it's a dirty little secret that, oh my gosh, you know, we get parking and nobody else? Just what's the situation compared to other cities?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Bagley, so I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. I do know if you're comparing the employees that work at that campus, the Civic Center campus, if we chose not to provide that parking, it would be different than, for instance, myself, who works at the Service Center. I've been there for 25 years, and I've always had that parking provided to me there, and I'm very thankful for it.
So the history is that we've always provided parking to our employees?
I think that's the history. I think to answer your question, what other cities do, I think it varies, based on what Nick just said. What I can say from personal experience, I think it depends whether you're downtown and what that situation looks like. The cities I've worked in have provided parking. But I think it really varies based on the city and the type of city. I believe Boulder charges, for example, so it's really all over the place.
But here, in the meantime, it'd be viewed as a takeaway?
Yes, it would.
Okay, all right, that's what I needed to know. Maybe, maybe the next time this comes up in three years, you could be so kind as to answer that question, because then it'll be relevant again. Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is your consent agenda. Item 9A is Resolution 2013-118, a resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County, city and county of Broomfield, the towns of Erie...
What about, excuse me?
Did I miss one?
Seventy-seven.
Oh, I'm sorry. They're sitting up there, don't they?
Yes.
That would be ordinance 2013-77.
Yes.
I'm sorry. That's a bill for an ordinance established on the charge of 50 cents per month for emergency telephone services, 911, for wired and wireless subscribers in Longmont for the first six months of calendar year 2014, and 75 cents for the last six months of calendar year 2014. And I don't believe there's a staff presentation on this.
I'll open ordinance 2013-77 to the public. Is anybody from the public that'd like to speak on this ordinance? I guess seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on 2013-77. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move ordinance 2013-77.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Now we're gonna go on to the consent agenda. First item is Resolution 2013-118, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County, city and county of Broomfield, the towns of Erie and Superior, and the cities of Boulder, Lafayette, and Lewisville for hazardous materials management for the period of 2014 to 2018. Item 9B is Resolution 2013-119, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the regional transportation district for employee EcoPasses. And item 9C is Resolution 2013-120, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the state of Colorado for flood assistance grant. Staff does not need to remove any of these items.
Councilmember Bagley?
I'd like to pull 9B. I just have a few questions.
Okay. I guess, Councilmember Finley? Go ahead.
Did you want to remove anything else? Okay, I'd like to move the consent agenda minus B.
I'll second that. Okay, let's vote on that motion. That passes seven to zero. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess my question is, I am not against this, but my question is, do we know how many employees use it? And if it would just be cheaper for those who use it to buy them individual passes? So I guess what I'm saying is, have we ever looked to see if buying everyone a pass at $63 is saving us money versus just, see what I'm saying?
Yeah, absolutely.
Excuse me. Good evening, Mayor Coombs, members of council. Nick Wall from Engineering Services Manager. We had actually hoped that we would get better information this year because the new passes that get swiped would give us that. We have not been able to get that information from RTD. They've been having problems so that we don't have that information yet. We can tell you how many people, which we did in the communication, have asked for and come forward to get new passes, because you had to get new passes when they went to the new card system and replace that. So we had that. But we cannot tell you the ridership. Our hope is, is that in future years, as they work the bugs out of that system, that they will. I believe, and I'm trying to open that right now, that we looked at, one of the things we normally look at in this communication, you know, that we said if we, if we did the entire program, 599 employees, that's 37,000. If we looked at monthly passes, that we said by comparison, the 2013 individual RTD regional pass is $176 a month, or $2,012 a year. And so 14 regional trip fares based on the 2013 rate, let me see. I think we said it is cheaper to, you know, if we bought the, $238 per EcoPass compared to $2,000 if we were buying monthly passes for an employee.
Gotcha. So basically, for every one person that actually uses the bus, you can just do it this way and purchase 10 passes. So if we're, if 10% of our employees are using it...
We're coming out ahead.
We're coming out ahead. So that said, I don't have a problem with it, but I would like to know, I mean, do 10% even use it? And so I just, I just, if there's a way to survey people quickly, easily, without the headache?
You know, we've tried to do that sometimes in the past. Tell us how often you use it, and you get varying amounts on that. Like I said, our hope is, is that the data and the card readers that RTD is using, they'll work out the technology next year, and when we're back here then, we'll be able to give you more exact information.
Okay, I feel comfortable with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Finley? So, Nick, so in order to participate, we have to purchase all 599 passes?
Yes, you're not allowed to come in and say, we only want to buy 10% of those, or we want to buy them for these employees. The way they run that program is to simply say, you buy them for all of your employees or none. And that's, that's the economy of scale that RTD works with on this program.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I move Resolution 2013-119.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is the first and main rezoning options, and Phil Greenwald will have a presentation on this item.
Members of council, my name is Phil Greenwald, transportation planner with the city of Longmont's Economic Development Division Department. As I pick up on my papers here and get reorganized, just wanted to let you know that we do have in front of you tonight, the first and main rezoning update. And I just wanted to kind of update folks, because I know not everybody was on council. Who's on council today is not, was not on council on October 28th, when this pass came before you. So let me just do a little quick update. So the process to date, we have, just to remind you, that in June of 2012, we actually came before the council, and council did adopt the first and main station transit revitalization plan at that time. And that plan did call for the complete rezoning of the area and just do a straight rezoning for that. So that was passed in 2012. January of 2013, we came back before you, and you approved the rezoning of the area to mixed use, from mixed industrial to mixed use. So that did follow the idea of the plan. We did hit a lawsuit. We, we had a lawsuit come against us in February regarding the mixed use zoning and the posting of the properties. That was in February of 2013. So in the summer and fall of 2013, we went back out, posted all the properties, and did a reenactment of the zoning. So we, we've tried to explain why we did that reenactment. I can answer any questions if people have more questions about that. We've been through that in the last couple of months here, so I just wanted to skip over that a little bit and get right to October of 2013, where you did reenact the rezoning to mixed use. And at the end of that discussion, you did ask staff to return within 45 days and try to address the financial hardships that owners, property owners may be having in that area. So here we are, day 42 is today, six weeks after you asked for it. So we wanted to come before you tonight and update you on the, what we've seen from the financial hardships on property owners in this mixed use district. So we did send out a survey to all four public speakers who spoke against the mixed use zoning at the time on the 28th of October. We did get three responses back from folks. One was a letter response from Butterball's attorney, and they did not specifically respond to the survey, and we'll show you kind of what their response was. And we did get two other survey responses from folks in that neighborhood who own property. The survey asked, what financial hardships did you incur from rezoning? And try to be specific about that. What changes would you recommend as property owners to help offset that hardship? And the top changes that would address most of the issues of any hardships? So the survey results came back. We did get the letter from Butterball's attorney that said, basically, they had irreversible property devaluation to them, and because of the issues and the litigation, I think that's all I can say, unless I turn to the city attorney. So that's all I can say about that issue right now. Also, adding or expanding nonconformity was an issue that one of the property owners had, and I think you heard about that when they did their public hearing, or when you did the public hearing and they spoke. They talked about not being able to expand that. And really, under our current city codes, there is provision for expanding within the property. So we've had people come forward, specifically had a car dealership come forward wanting to expand their office. That's certainly allowable. Car dealerships are not allowed under the mixed use zoning, but as a nonconforming use, they can expand that car lot, the office building for the car lot on their site. So they can expand and do things like that. But they can't do it to other properties. So that's kind of the key issue there. They can't buy additional properties in the mixed use zoning and expand that mixed industrial, that use that was allowed in the mixed industrial use. Another survey result was that folks wanted to allow other industrial uses in mixed use zoning. And so this is where it gets a little tricky, and this one's kind of the difficult one. What we've found here is there are some provisions in the code that do allow for that, but they are superseded in other parts of the code. So if someone is to come in right now and say, we want to change it from this mixed industrial use to that mixed industrial use, we'd have to say no as a staff at this point. And that really follows in line with what we've heard from a number of redevelopers or developers and investors in this area who have said, we want some consistency in what happens in this mixed use zoning area, because if you allow expansion of nonconforming uses, we're not sure what that does as far as a property to reinvest in. So this is kind of the rock in the hard place piece for all of us, I think. And then, again, the developer, the redevelopment community's concerns about the surrounding uses is really the key to that. One last result that we did get, one of the folks did say something about, well, we'd like to see some incentives in the mixed use zoning. How can you incentivize us to go into this mixed use category more? And so we do have some investment incentives available in the urban renewal area. Downtown has them, and redevelopment areas also have them. And we have folks who can speak to you about that if you have any questions regarding those issues. Also, we're doing infrastructure reinvestment or investment in the area. And we talked about that fairly extensively, I think, at the last council meeting that we addressed you on. And that really includes those two fridge replacements, and then you talked about floodway expansion, I think, recently at a recent council meeting to purchase the mobile home park and expand the floodway. So in summary, we just, we really think that the current zoning codes do allow property owners to improve their property with similar uses. We do have a few folks who are coming into us and asking us for that very thing, and so we're, we're working with them to try to extend within the property where it makes sense. But that expanding industrial uses in this area is a concern to redevelopers that have come into the city and talk, and have spoken to us. So we just want to make sure you understand that as well, that there is a concern out there from the redevelopment community. And then also continue to work with property owners to lessen any impacts of mixed use zoning. Of course, as people come in, we'll certainly work with them as best we can within the codes we have, and we'll, we can certainly report back on any hardships that people report to us. But at this time, we're not hearing that any hardships have occurred since the January 2013 original approval of this. So that's kind of where we stand right now, and I'd be willing to certainly take any questions you have. And we have, again, some folks in the audience who can help answer questions as well.
Councilmember Finley?
So, I'm a little confused. It seems to me that there aren't going to be any businesses that are going to be forced to actually change much. In a way, for instance, the car lot will be able to continue as a car lot. It'll be sort of grandfathered in? Or is that part of the new mixed use that they can still keep doing the same thing? In other words, what I'm now asking is, are any businesses going to be forced to change anything from what they're doing now?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Christiansen, we do allow for these nonconforming uses to continue as long as they want to continue. And in fact, if they were to sell the property to somebody else, they could, the new owner could continue the property as well. The other idea is that the incentives, there's incentives with the rezoning and with other economic incentives to help redevelop properties when they want to.
Thank you, Mayor. And Phil, can you just confirm what I, what I do remember of the mixed use zoning is that there are some, what people might view as industrial-type uses still allowed in mixed use? For example, it is allowed to have a car rental place, and it is allowed to have a gas station, realizing that, you know, people that live in a mixed use environment have to buy gas somewhere. And you can have service stations to service cars, because if you're in TOD, then you might take transit the day you want to have your car serviced, which means you want to be within walking distance of the transit stop. So that doesn't disallow any kind of auto-dependent uses that are kind of supporting services for that kind of mixed use environment.
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Levison, that is correct to a point. We do have, though we have one mixed use area, that mixed use area has a concept plan behind it that allows certain uses in different parts of that. So some of those uses that you described are allowed in what's called the commercial core piece of that right along Main Street. So I think that's where we really try to involve some of those uses that do support the folks that would live in that area.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Okay. Just for a minute. So just to clarify this, the only business that felt they were adversely affected was the Butterball factory, right?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Christiansen, we did have three speakers that day. We've heard some other, other people who feel like there may be a hardship coming, but you're correct, that Butterball's been the one group that's spoken specifically about hardship, financial hardship.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no questions, Phil. I move that we apply the enacted mixed use zoning and the existing land development code in the first and main area.
Okay, it's been, let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Thank you, Phil.
Councilmember Finley? Just waiting for the next item.
Your next item is the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority Resolution, and I will read that once you become that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we recess as the Longmont City Council and convene as the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, let's vote. Okay, it passes seven to zero, so now we are the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority.
And your first item is Resolution R. LURA 2013-05, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners as the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority enacting a supplemental budget and making an additional appropriation for the expenses and liabilities of the authority for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2013. And I believe that Teresa Malloy had provided some information at that earlier in the evening.
Councilor Ray Gagley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I would move R. LURA 2013-05.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? I've seen none, let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Councilor Ray Gagley.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn as the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority and reconvene as Longmont City Council.
Okay, let's vote. That passes seven to zero, so now we're back into city council mode. Okay, so now it's time for final call, public invited to be heard. Is there anybody from the audience that'd like to speak during the final call, public invited to be heard? So new firsts. We're not done yet. All right, our call, our call is public invited to be heard, final call, public invited to be heard. So now it's time for mayor and council comments.
Councilor Ray Gagley.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to encourage everyone to come out this Saturday, Saturday for the parade? Yes. What time we starting? It's not four o'clock, is it? We line up at four, but it starts at five, five o'clock on Main Street. Also, I would like to acknowledge the Kids Holiday Bike Program, I was talking to Buzz Feldman the other day, began in 1987. This year, throughout its 25-year program, they've given away over 10,000 bicycles at Christmas time. This, last year, they gave away 569 bicycles. Because of the hard work of about 150 volunteers this year, they put over 700 hours of work to refurbish bikes and encouraging safe riding. Over the years, Golden, Van Lions, and Ace Hardware have transported the bikes whenever they were needed to be taken. For this year, on Saturday, December 14th, the bikes will be given away on a first-come, first-come basis at the previous Sears retail space inside the Twin Peaks Mall. The giveaway will begin at 10:00 AM. No registration is needed, and there is a limit of one bike per family. The Boy Scouts will be on hand to serve as escorts for those picking up bicycles. Every youngster who will get a bike will also get a new helmet. So I would also like, again, I'd like to thank Buzz Feldman and the Kids Holiday Bike Program and all 150 volunteers who made this happen. So thank you for the hard work and the effort to make that happen, thank you.
Councilor Ray Gagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, and while you're down at the mall picking up your bike, you should also do some shopping. There are shops that are still open at Twin Peaks Mall, and this is a great time, those guys aren't going to be able to operate for a few years, and it'd be a great time to go in and shop for Christmas at the mall. There are shops open. One of those places, actually, you have a chance to help Lyons Business, the Rockin' River Resort, which was destroyed in the flood. They're selling their wine in the Twin Peaks Mall at the Olive Oil Store, just as you go in to the left. So you can go buy some wine, pick up a bike, do some Christmas shopping, you should go down to Twin Peaks Mall, you could visit Santa, Santa's there as well. So my business of the week is the general area of the Twin Peaks Mall, and go help, go help Rockin' River Resort and the other stores that are in there.
Councilor Ray Gagley.
I'd like everybody to remember that this is Giving Day until midnight. Of course, every day could be Giving Day, but we have all kinds of wonderful things to suggest, such as the St. Brain Habitat for Humanity, the Humane Society, Al Comité, Our Center, these are all good places to give to.
Councilor Ray Gagley.
Thank you, Mayor. So for a couple of weeks, I've been thinking about proposing something as a community we could do to help our fellow community in Lyons, and sort of been kicking it around with some other cities, is maybe to mount an effort that we choose a couple of weekends to, everybody go and shop Lyons. After all, they were here, they shopped here, and I talked to Mayor of Lyons, and she would certainly appreciate it, but they're really in a tough spot with their revenue, and, you know, it'd be a nice and generous thing to encourage our residents and maybe do a little bit of outreach to the communities and suggest we help support our fellow city who, neighbor city who was so devastated by the flood. I was not able to go to their holiday parade this past weekend, but from the report in the newspaper, it looks like they had a lot of community spirit, even on a very cold evening, but I would really like to propose that we do something, maybe pick a couple of weekends out that we encourage people to go shop Lyons and explore what businesses are up and running, and I understand from the mayor, there are quite a few businesses that are there offering services, and some new businesses are coming in, believe it or not, into spaces that were not occupied. So just a suggestion that we may just want to get our heads together and do some good out there.
I'd like to let you know about a festival I was invited to this last weekend, it was at Eltona Middle School, it was the Diwali, it's their festival of light for the Indian community, and I just think one of the best assets that the city has is all of our cultural diversity. I mean, we have this Anitas festivals with the Philippians Soccer Festival and the Day of the Dead, and, I mean, all these great festivals, and I just really appreciate, you know, the opportunity to get to go to these festivals. I mean, the food was awesome, the costumes, the dance, so I just feel really thankful that we do have all these different cultures in our community, and that's quite an asset for our city, and we should be very fortunate because of our diversity.
Councilor Ray Gagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. First of all, I just noticed that on the screen, whenever I look at you and recognize, I have yet to see you not smiling on television, so congratulations to you for being such a happy man.
It's because I got this one today.
Nice, nice. I guess another thing, just random comment, that's something that came on, and this is more for my fellow council members, and I just want it said in public, that this council had a rocky start, and for a lot of reasons. Elections were lost and won, and accusations made, but I just want to say that since this council team came together, whether it's the board meetings, or the council meetings, or, I mean, the board interviews or the council meetings, or the just seeing the correspondence back and forth between both old and new council members with our constituents, the way the votes and the debates going, regardless of politics and personalities, I'm quite pleased with how we've done so far. So thanks for not making my life miserable when it comes to this particular community service position, thank you.
Councilor Ray Gagley. Thank you, Mayor. Just before we forget, we had a delegation from Pakistan here this morning, and they were at the Disaster Recovery Center, and they were here meeting, they met with staff, the mayor, Councilmember Moore, and myself, to see how we ran the, and Dan Eamon, see how the, we worked with, how we brought together the Disaster Recovery Center, how we dealt with the flood, and how it all came together. So they were very appreciative of the information they received, and I'm sure maybe Sandy and Harold will say something in just a second about the whole thing. Not to put you on the spot, but I will go ahead and do it. So it was really a pleasure to have them, they were very appreciative, so, thank you.
All right, speaking of here, any additional remarks?
Just a quick remark, and it's related to what we're going through as part of flood recovery. I do want to say that, again, that this is a marathon, not a sprint, and it's a, today it's a marathon still at a sprinter's pace in some ways, and so we continue to move forward, and every day brings new challenges, brings new successes, and so what I did want to recognize is the continuing hard work of everyone involved. The staff continues to plug away in a really aggressive manner that's controlled, because they understand the pace that we need to move, but at the same time, they're managing all the daily operations, and so it's continuing to see really great work being done. Today, we actually had some good news, and I want to publicly thank the governor for some letters that he signed today that is directly related to individual assistance, and specifically the property owners that, the people that own mobile homes that have been damaged and that have been certified damaged via inspections, and so that is something that staff has been working on for quite some time. And I want to thank Sandy for her diligence in this, because today, we got our first letters. And so I just wanted to say, we are continuing to move forward, we're continuing to work. It's a marathon, and as a staff, we continue to stay committed to this effort, and we will, I just mentioned to Sandy, we want to do an update here in City Managers Report next week on everything that we're doing, but I wanted to take this opportunity to thank the governor and the work that he's, that the governor and his staff has done through this process. We have, we have been fortunate that we have had a lot of good partners in this, and without good partners, you can't be successful in this type of endeavor, so that's a quick update, you'll hear more next week.
And speaking of marathons, the last six miles of a marathon is just as tough as the first 20 miles, so you could expect that. City of Honey, any remarks?
No comments, Mayor.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.